Good morning, welcome to the regular meeting of City Council for Tuesday, May 11th, 2021. Council will continue to meet virtually until further notice. All meetings will be cable cast on the city's channel and live streamed on the city's channel Pittsburgh YouTube channel. The clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Coghill.
Here.
Miss, they're Kraus.
Yeah.
Mr. Lavelle.
Yeah.
Mr. O'Connor. Ms. Strasburger.
Here.
Mr. Wilson.
Here.
Mrs. Cal Smith. Reverend Burgess Chair.
Here.
Six members present.
Thank you very much as we join from our locations, please place your hand on your heart or think of the flag. And after we say the pledge of allegiance, it will be, we will have a moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, to their public for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible, with life, liberty, and justice for all. And so we'll have a moment of silence. Alright, thank you. I always want to sneak my life into my allegiance. Alright, so next we will go into proclamations. We have a proclamation from Councilwoman Smith.
Council President Cal Smith presents now therefore be it resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh to hereby commend and thank the Pittsburgh Grandview Lions Club and Lions Club International for their unselfish dedication to serving those in need and be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh to hereby declare Tuesday, May 11th, 2021 to be Grand Lions Club Day in the City of Pittsburgh.
Need a motion?
So moved.
You second?
Second.
Alright, I know there are people on the call. I'm not sure how she had this planned. Madam Clerk?
We do have a list of people that was supposed to speak on the process, but I have no order either.
Barbie?
I don't have an order as to who is going to speak. We do have a list of people, David Spinelli, Anthony.
David, are you with us?
I see him on, but he's muted. There's a Tony, Kavleen.
So perhaps we will come back to, I'm, I'm, I'm not sure how to get them on. So perhaps we'll come back to the conversation with them when Madam President comes on. What do you think?
Yes.
I don't know how to get them to talk. Alright, so we will, um, is there any more proclamations? I don't, I don't see any. If there are no proclamations, then the next order of, of business is a public comment. I would like to remind everyone that the rules of council state that comments are limited to matters of concern, official actions, or deliberation which may or may not be before council, profanity will not be permitted. And I have three registered speakers. The first speaker I have is Ronald Hicks Jr.
Thank you Chairman. Members of council, my name is Ron Hicks. I'm a law partner at Porter Wright Morrison Arthur, and I'm an out and proud member of the Pittsburgh LGBTQ plus community. My pronouns are he, him, and his. In 2017, with the encouragement of the National LGBTQ Chamber of Commerce, commonly known as the NGLCC, I and several other LGBTQ plus business owners and professionals in the Pittsburgh area formed Three Rivers Business Alliance. Three RBA is the first ever Chamber of Commerce for LGBTQ plus businesses and their allies operating in the Pittsburgh Greater Allegheny Region. I proudly serve as president of Three RBA and its 501(c)(3) Foundation. As a member based organization, Three RBA's mission is to advance diversity, inclusion, and growth. Three RBA accomplishes its mission in part by expanding the economic interest of LGBTQ plus businesses and their allies in, in the greater Pittsburgh region. Three RBA is currently supported by several corporations operating in the Pittsburgh Greater Allegheny Region, including PNC Bank, UPMC, Duquesne Light, and Giant Eagle, to name a few. Bill number 2021 1416 gives Pittsburgh the opportunity to join the growing number of metropolitan areas which include NGLCC certified LGBTQ plus businesses among their pool of certified companies that have equitable access to contracting and procurement opportunities. There are over 1,200 NGLCC certified LGBTQ plus businesses in the United States with 68 of them located here in Pennsylvania. Locally, these NGLCC certified businesses include an architectural acoustics and environmental noise control company in East Liberty, a business consulting firm in Lawrenceville, a recruiting and human resource outsourcing company in Mount Lebanon, a psychotherapy and an employee assistance programming company in Westview, a website development company on the South Side, a concrete manufacturer representative company in Aspenwall, a custom and stock packaging company in O'Hara Township, and a computer programming and project management company in Robinson Township. On behalf of Three RBA and its members, I thank councilperson Strasburger, Kraus, and O'Connor for their sponsorship and introduction of this historic legislation. For LGBTQ plus citizens, this inclusive initiative provides fair and equal access to contracting opportunities and economic development programs that drive innovation, create jobs, and promote economic growth throughout Pittsburgh and the Greater Allegheny Region. And for the City of Pittsburgh, inclusion of the LGBTQ plus community and its supplier diversity programs will move the city closer to its goal of becoming a competitive 21st century city.
Thank you very much. Jonathan Lovitz.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman. Good morning, council members. Echoing everything that my colleague from the Three RBA just said, I extend our deepest thanks to Councilmember Strasburger and to all of you for being so supportive of this important legislation. My name is Jonathan Lovitz. I'm a special advisor to the NGLCC. My pronouns are he and him. And most importantly, I'm here in celebration with you all just down the way in Philadelphia, cheering you all on as this bill makes its way through council. I have had the tremendous honor of writing and lobbying for and passing what will now be my 26th bill to include LGBT and often disability and veteran owned businesses as we did with Governor Tom Wolf in 2016 throughout the entire Commonwealth and now spreading through cities across the country. Pittsburgh is leading and in fact, you're beating Philadelphia and you better believe they'll be hearing from me about that later today. But you should be so proud that you're declaring Pittsburgh open for business. It's not just a moral imperative, it's an economic one. We've got to get our businesses from every community back up on their feet. And I want to clarify something that I think is particularly important about legislation like this. It often is for the most vulnerable among us. Too many people have concerns over the past that this is going to help cisgendered white gay men get to the table. We're already there and we're doing just fine with our privilege. What this is about doing is helping those furthest away. The first ever trans woman of color to own a construction company who has been told there is no place for you in certain other communities is now going to be told Pittsburgh welcomes you and your innovations and the jobs you want to create. So we'll look forward to working with our Communities of Color Initiative, our Trans and TGNC Task Force, the Three RBA, and all of the corporate partners throughout Pittsburgh to make this a huge win. And it goes so much deeper than contracting. Remember, while we can be married in 50 states, it's still legal in 35 of them to say, we don't give money to your kind. Until the Equality Act is passed, it's going to take the intentional leadership of councils like you and governors around the country saying, we're not going to stand for that kind of discrimination in our communities and more importantly, in our economies. So I extend my deepest thanks from the National LGBT Chamber of Commerce, all of our affiliates around the country, the 1.4 million LGBT business owners we represent, and perhaps most importantly, the 1.7 trillion dollars we add to the US economy despite such pervasive discrimination. You're helping us shatter myths and stereotypes about who we are and what we can do. And we're going to build even stronger bridges, literally, together with other communities in Pittsburgh, creating more work, more jobs, and more revenue that makes all of our communities stronger. So I thank you so much for your leadership and let's get this passed.
Alright, thank you very much. That takes us to Shawman Puma. Shawman, are you with us today?
Yes, I am. Greetings, greetings, salutations, and a Kesha like a aim. Congratulations for that legislation. That shows a lot of great progress that you are willing to do the right thing. So I represent the Airqua Confederacy of Aboriginal American People. And as we reclaim our stolen lands throughout the Americas, which includes our lands on this continent, we're not harming your citizens. Actually, we're working with your citizens in various capacities for them to be sustainable on our land. And in this process, although we can't say the same for your city government municipal officers here on our lands, as we move about our lands and the work that we are doing for our nation and in assisting other peoples that are citizens of this this territory as well, we're being forced assimilated, harassed, kicked, our doors are being kicked in over missing cats. We're being handcuffed and only to be released immediately after we inform them of their oath to your constitution as they're fully aware they're acting under the color of law and not law, acting in ultra vary outside of the jurisdiction of our government to government relationship that we have with Congress and that you're bound to as well. All while you allow these acts of genocide and discrimination to continue. Based on your lack of interest in our many, many multiple meetings that we've had and our claims that we've made, all of this is on video and has been presented to Aaron Bruni, the Office of Municipal Investigations and the Citizens Police Review Board, and they've done nothing. With no justice, I will continue to remind you in or out of office, you're still held to be, you're still to be held accountable for your oaths to the constitution as citizens. So there is, there is to be actions on your part to give remedy to our people. There is no absolute clear move in your, your way of actually helping this to, to happen. Also, there's no statute of limitation on crimes against humanity and forced assimilation and genocide ever. And our free and prior informed consent must be made with our nation's people according to the constitutional jurisdiction. No government to government relationship with our people. Thus, I remind you, lands held by the city HUD, the URA are on records as Indian lands and territories. We know history and law. Do you? Thus, are you, as you move to repurpose our lands in this territory, I remind you to tread lightly City Council and the URA and HUD. Now is your opportunity to avoid future issues related to land theft for it is unconstitutional and it is internationally law protected that requires our free and prior and informed consent in these matters. We will be extending an open invitation to meet with the Land Bank, the URA City Council to further these discussions. Looking forward to these peaceful discussions and honorable discussion. The time is now for you all to honor your oath. I've been in contract with entities here in Pittsburgh and they have honored that I pay no federal taxes and I pay no state taxes as they did their due diligence to affirm and make sure that I was not being fraudulent. The government, the federal government and the state government came back to them and said, no, you're not.
Thank you very much. That will take us back to proclamations. President Smith, we read your proclamation, we passed it, but we did not have speakers. So we wanted to wait for you to come back. I will now hand it back over to you and you can introduce them and have them speak.
Thank you. And Reverend, I'll just, I'll hand it right back over to you because I have to be somewhere at 11. But I'll, and I'll register my votes ahead of time. But I do want to call the Grandview Lions Club onto the phone. And I think that Dave Spinelli, could you speak for the, could you get on the phone? Dave? You have to unmute your phone, Dave. Trying to see if I can see anyone else. I just see Dave still on his date. Dave, can you get on the phone? Okay. Okay, we just have. I think that's it. That's it. But I do want to talk about the Grandview Lions Club just briefly. I just want to say that they do so much for Mount Washington and beyond and the Hilltop Communities. They do a lot to help with all the events in the Mount. There's not an event that happens in Mount Washington that the Lions Club is not a part of, is not somehow engaged in. If it's something that's really positive for the community, they're there. And I just want to thank them. They also manage part of the, where the flag is on Grandview Avenue. That's their property that they manage that little memorial. They, they manage that and take care of that for us, for the city. But they do so much more and they're always there whenever you need them. If anybody in Mount Washington needs them, they're there. They're there for the, the purpose of their organization, but they're there for the community as a whole. And I can't imagine Mount Washington or Duquesne Heights without their leadership and without their volunteerism in the community. So I just want to thank them for all the work they do. And I'll deliver the prop to them later today. Thank you.
Alright, thank you very much. That takes us to our next order of business, which is the presentations of papers. We start off with Councilman Coghill on behalf of me, Chair of Urban Recreation.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Councilman Reverend Burgess presents Bill number 1465, Resolution Authorizing Pursuant to Chapter 173 of the Code, the naming of a public fountain located at the northeastern corner of Allegheny Commons as the Patricia Reagan Rooney Memorial Fountain. Bill number 1466, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Department of Parks and Recreation to enter on behalf of the city into an amended agreement with Allegheny County Department of Human Services for the city's operations of its senior community centers and in order to add $20,827.4 of supplemental compensation to the city for direct contact service employees providing direct consumer contact services via their senior programs Grab and Go Meal Program. Said amended agreement shall be for a term of one year at no cost to the city with compensation in, in an amount of $804,277.4. Bill number 1467, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Department of Parks and Recreation to enter on behalf of the city into an agreement with Keys Service Corp. With regard to the 2021 AmeriCorps Summer Program, said agreement involves the matching of funds and shall be at a cost not to exceed $12,000.
Thank you very much. Councilman Coghill, Chair of Public Works.
Mr. Chair, thank you.
Thank you.
Councilman Coghill presents Bill number 1468, Resolution Vacating a Portion of Coke Weight laid out in the New Homestead Plan of Lots, recorded in Plan Book Volume 18, Page 1 in the 31st Ward, 5th Council District. Bill number 1469, Resolution Providing for an Agreement with the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania's Department of Transportation for local costs associated with the State Route 4000 project and providing for payment of municipal incurred costs not to exceed $42,289. Bill number 1470, Resolution Approving the Recommendation Made by the Director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure that the streets, Denton Avenue, Altamont Way, Whitewood Drive, Cedarbrook Drive, Kentwood Drive, Coolridge Place, Coolridge Street, and Shindley Manor Drive be paved with asphalt in accordance with Section 41706 of the Pittsburgh Code of Ordinances.
Bill. Thank you very much.
I have two more, sorry.
I'm sorry, you paused though.
Bill number 1471, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure to apply for grant funding from the Pennsylvania Department of Conservation and Natural Resources Community Conservation Partnerships Program to provide funding for the Three Rivers Heritage Trail Repaving Project. The grant proposal includes an ask of $112,988.70 with a local match of $112,988.70 to come out of the 2021 Pittsburgh capital budget. In the event the grant is awarded, this resolution provides for an agreement and expenditures not to exceed $225,977.40. Bill number 1472, Resolution Further Amending Resolution 97 of 2018 entitled, Resolution Providing for a Contract or Agreement Providing for the Design, Repairs, Maintenance, Improvements, Emergencies, and/or the Purchase of Materials, Equipment, and Supplies in Connection with the McFerrin Street Bridge Project and Providing for Reimbursement with the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania Department of Transportation and Providing for the Cost thereof not to exceed $3,750,000 to increase the total not to exceed to $3,807,030.36 for final payment of work performed by Gilsec Construction. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That takes us now to Councilman, Councilwoman Gross. Chair of, of Intergovernmental Affairs.
We'll need somebody to present.
I'm sorry, she's on the line. So Councilman Kraus has been turned into a cat. So how about Councilman Coghill on behalf of Councilwoman Gross?
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Councilman Gross presents Bill number 1473, Resolution Adopting Plan Revision to the City of Pittsburgh Official Sewer Facilities Plan for East Liberty Center 6135 and 6145 Penn Avenue.
Thank you very much. That takes us, I believe, to Councilman Kraus, who has, who, but I don't see him. So Councilman Lavelle on behalf of Councilman Kraus.
Mr. President.
Thank you very much.
He has our new papers.
Alright, that's right. I think he has no new papers. That takes us to Councilman Lavelle, Chair of Finance and Law.
Mr. President.
Thank you.
Councilman Lavelle presents Bill number 1474, Resolution Providing for Further Renewal by the Council of a Declaration of Disaster Emergency ratified by Council on March 17, 2020 to extend the effectiveness of the declaration for 29 additional days. Thereabout making the declaration effective until June 8, 2021 in response to the ongoing public health emergency associated with the spread of the coronavirus. Bill number 1475, Resolution Authorizing the Issue One of a Warrant in the Amount of $25,000 to the John H. McCurry in full and final settlement of an employee employment matter.
We have a motion for Bill 1474, Mr. Lavelle?
Yes, motion to waive the rules of council so this can be taken today under final action.
Second.
Alright, probably moved and second all in favor sentified by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppusers, nay. That takes us to Councilman O'Connor, Chair of Public Safety Services. Councilman Strasburger on behalf of Councilman O'Connor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Councilman O'Connor presents Bill number 1476, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Public Safety on behalf of the city to enter into an agreement with Swank Motion Pictures Inc. as they stole stores for rental and displace rights of certain movie entertainment for events to be held by the Office of Special Events.
Thank you very much. Councilwoman Strasburger, Chair of Innovation Performance and Asset Management.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Strasburger presents Bill number 1477, Resolution Authorizing the City's Department of Parks and Recreation to enter into relevant agreement with Information Age Technologies Inc. for the co-pilot annual subscription fee for the healthy active living senior centers software subscriptions used to collect data and reportino services to Allegheny County Department of Human Services Area Agency on Aging as mandated by our contract with Allegheny County asset negotiating prices to be determined over a term of three years. Bill number 1478, Resolution Amending Resolution 147 of 2020 authorizing the city to enter into a professional services agreement and/or a contract with core business technology for software equipment and services related to the installation of payment processing and cashiering system for the Department of Finances to fund the contract for the remainder of 2021 at a cost not to exceed $55,830.15 and to include additional integration at a cost not to exceed $6,000 and providing for the payment of cost not to exceed $452,382.32 for years 2015, 16, 17, 2020, and 2021.
Thank you very much. Councilman Wilson, Chair of Land Use and Economic Development.
No new papers, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much. That takes us to unfinished, unfinished business. Seeing no unfinished business. We're ready to remove, move rather, to reports of committee for final action. That begins us with Councilman R. Daniel Lavelle, Committee on Finance and Law.
President.
Councilman Lavelle presents Bill number 1461, Report of the Committee on Finance and Law for May 5, 2021 with an affirmative recommendation. Bill number 1411, Resolution Providing for the Sale of Certain Property acquired by the city at tax sales items A through H. 1642 Worthington, Zero Gopher, Zero Killborn, Non-64 Manten, Zero Industry, 1031 Woods Run, 3251 Central. Bill number 1412, Resolution Providing for the Conveyance by the City of Certain Property having been set, placed for sale to adjourning property owners in conjunction with the city's side yard programs, item A through H. 816 Cherokee, Zero Stanley, 1417 Warner, 1608, 1606, and 1600 Brighton, 1607 through 09 McCullough, and 1733 McCullough. Bill number 1416, Ordinance Amending the Pittsburgh Code Title I Administrative Article IX Boards, Commissions, and Authorities to Add a Section 177811 LGBT Business Enterprises.
Thank you. The bill is now ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of this bill will vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross. Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor. Ms. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mrs. Cal Smith.
Aye.
Reverend Burgess Chair.
Aye.
Aye, seven, no zero.
Bill has received the legally required number of votes is finally passed. That takes us to Councilman Corey O'Connor, Committee on Public Safety Services.
Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Councilman O'Connor presents Bill number 1462, Report of the Committee on Public Safety Services for May 5, 2021 with an affirmative recommendation. Bill number 1410, Ordinance Amending and Supplementing the Pittsburgh City Code Title VI Entitled Conduct Article I Entitled Regulated Rights and Actions, Chapter 601 Entitled Public Order to amend the title and substance in Section 60117 currently reading reserved with the title Hate Crimes and substantive legislation to provide for additional penalties for criminal conduct motivated by hatred towards certain characteristics of other persons under certain terms and conditions. Bill number 1442, Resolution Adopting the Allegheny County Hazardous Mitigation Plan as the official hazardous mitigation plan of the city.
Thank you very much. The bill is now ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the bill will vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Ms. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mrs. Cal Smith.
Aye.
Reverend Burgess Chair.
Aye.
Aye, seven, no zero.
The bill having received the legally required number of votes is finally passed. That takes us to Councilman Bobby Wilson, Committee on Land Use and Economic Development.
Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilman Wilson presents Bill number 1463, Report of the Committee on Land Use and Economic Development for May 5, 2021 with an affirmative. and Economic Development for May 5, 2021, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill Number 1450, Resolution Amending Resolution 350 to authorize the entering into of leases by the Department of City Planning for Display of Art in Connection with a Professional Services Agreement with Boom Concepts and/or Bloomfield Garfield Corporation. Bill Number 1460, Resolution Proclaiming Pittsburgh City Council's Intent to Introduce an Ordinance Placing Limitations on the Use of Single-Use Plastic Bags Within the City of Pittsburgh.
You've heard the reading title of the bill. Is there any discussion on the bill?
Just briefly, Councilman, if I may. I, I just want to recognize the work of, of Councilwoman Strausberger. This is a passion that we share and I know is shared throughout council. And I know we have a bit of a road ahead of us, but it is, it's the best good start we've had in the years that I've been here. And it's largely, if not entirely, due to the work of Councilwoman Strausberger. And I just want to thank and commend her for her efforts. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other discussion on the bill? Seeing none, the bill is now ready for final action.
Mr. Chair.
I'm sorry, I did not.
It was a very quick hand. You would have missed it. I just wanted to thank Councilman Kraus and, and let him know and let everyone know that as I said before, this is going to be a, a very public and a very big tent process. So everyone is welcome to participate. If you, if you care about it a little bit or a lot, we want to make sure that your voice is included. So thank you. Thank you, Councilman. Appreciate your, your passion and your interest in this issue as well. You've been advocating this for years as well.
Any other conversation? See no conversation. The bill is now ready for final action. All in favor of the pass of the bill will vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. Lavell.
Aye.
Ms. Strausberger.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson. Mrs. Cal Smith.
Aye.
Reverend Burgess, Chair.
Aye.
Aye, seven, no zero.
The bill having received the required number of votes is now finally passed. I believe that takes us through the reports for final action. That takes us to motions and revolutions.
We have one more, Reverend.
What did I miss?
Councilwoman Gross has one for final action.
I'm sorry, as she does, I skipped right over her. Sorry about that. Councilwoman Gross of Intergovernmental Affairs.
Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Gross presents Bill Number 1464, Report of the Committee on Intergovernmental Affairs for May 5, 2021, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill Number 1409, Resolution Adopting Plan Revision to the City of Pittsburgh's Official Sewer Facilities Plan for the 131 Shiloh Street.
All right, you've heard the reading title of the bill. Is there any discussion on the bill?
Just briefly.
Sure.
I just want to thank Councilwoman Strausberger for working through a lot of this, especially this was an, a business that's trying to open during a pandemic and the tap-in fees were so exorbitant that they were having a difficult time. And she really, she and the administration really helped a lot on this. So I want to thank you. Thank you for your work on this.
Any other conversation? See no other conversation, the bill is now ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the bill will vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. Lavell.
Aye.
Ms. Strausberger.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson. Mrs. Cal Smith.
Aye.
Reverend Burgess, Chair.
Aye.
Aye, seven, no zero.
The bill having received the legally required number of votes is finally passed. Now that takes us to motions and resolutions. Madam Clerk.
Councilman Wilson presents Bill Number 1480. Now therefore be it resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby recognize the Pittsburgh Gaelic Athletic Association as a civic and service organization within the appropriate context of the Pennsylvania Small Games of Chance Act as amended.
I need a motion.
Motion to approve.
Need a second.
Second.
Any conversation? If not, all those in favor, certified by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppusers, nay. That takes us to final action on Bill 1474. It's already presented by Mr. Lavell. If you would, do you need to read again, Madam Clerk, or not?
I'll read it again for final.
All right, there you go.
Bill Number 1474, Resolution Providing for Further Renewal by the Council of a Declaration of Disaster Emergency Ratified by Council on March 17, 2020, to Extend the Effectiveness of the Declaration for 29 Additional Days, Thereabout Making the Declaration Effective until June 8, 2021, in Response to the Ongoing Public Health Emergency Associated with the Spread of the Coronavirus.
You've heard the reading and title of the bill. Is any discussion on the bill? Bill is now ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the bill will vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. Lavell.
Aye.
Ms. Strausberger.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mrs. Cal Smith.
Aye.
Reverend Burgess, Chair.
Aye.
Aye, six, no zero.
The bill having received the legally required number of votes is finally passed. That takes us to a few announcements. Tomorrow, Wednesday, May 12, at 10:00 a.m., council will meet for their standing committees' meeting. To register to speak at council meeting, please fill out the signup form at 9:00 a.m. Wednesday. Also, register by calling the city clerk's office at 412-255-2138. Also, tomorrow afternoon at 1:30, council will hold a cablecast post-agenda discussion on the state of healthcare workers in the city of Pittsburgh chaired by Councilwoman Strausberger. Is there anything for members? Seeing none, I will now entertain a motion to excuse the absent members, approve the minutes, and adjourn the meeting.
They're moved.
Second.
All those in favor, certified by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppusers, nay. We are adjourned.